Okay, good evening. We'll like to begin our September meeting with the pledge to the flag, please.
The flag of the United States of America and the two republics which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this evening we have a public hearing scheduled for seven o'clock, and the public hearing is for ordinance number zero-two dash two zero-two-four to amend the town charter concerning residency to run for council, and ordinance number zero-three dash two, or two zero-two-four to amend the town charter concerning residency to run for mayor, ordinance number oh-four dash two, oh, uh, two oh-two-four to amend the town charter concerning uncontested elections. Is there anyone here for the public hearing for the ordinances? Anyone here for public hearing for ordinances? Third call, anyone here for public hearing for ordinances? Okay. Hearing none, we'll go on to our meeting and then bring these back up under our regular meeting, right, Mandy?
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing, and we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Noes, motion's carried. Okay, now, at this time, we will open our regular monthly meeting, September twenty twenty-four, with opening with the approval of the minutes from last month, and it says August, yeah, August meeting and conference report.
I'll make a motion that we approve August operating statements, August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four council meeting minutes, and conference financial statements for August twenty twenty-four.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, or is any question, or sec, or we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Noes, okay, motions carried. Okay, we can be right on to the mayor's report. A couple of weeks ago, I did have a breakfast meeting with the new plant manager of Lehigh Portland Cement. It's Walter Smith. He just took over from Paul Arnold about two months ago now. He's planning on coming to our council meeting one night to introduce himself. He's been busy since he took office out there, but we will be having sometime, I think, in October, we'll be probably have another community council meeting at Lehigh for the both communities of New End and Union Bridge, so I guess he'll be at that and give us some more information at that time. Just as speaking of Lehigh, we had some traffic complaints last week. We had some letters and stuff going around on Facebook, which I don't have Facebook. People tell me about it. I think that's a cheap way of people to advertise stuff and get their, say what they want to say, and they don't come out and say who they are, but complaining about truck traffic on Main Street going too fast, going and passing bus, buses with the lights flashing, and blaming Lehigh trucks. Well, Lehigh does not have trucks. They haven't had trucks for years. They are private contractors. They go in and out of there, and they have been notified over the years about their speeding and their driving habits. So Lehigh is aware of the problem, and I guess unless we actually have, uh, people take some pictures of the trucks, they're talking about Jake brakes and truck speeding, unless we actually know who the drivers are, there's over 200 trucks a day that goes in and out of Lehigh right now. They're saying trucks are going through the bus stops when they have the camp, when the lights are on. That shouldn't be hard to do because all buses have cameras on when those lights are on, they're flashing. So I don't know whether that's warranted or unwarranted, so that should be easy to find out who's going through the buses if that's so. So hopefully, if that is the case, they can take care of that. Kevin is off on maternity leave right now, and when he gets back, he will be putting the traffic signs out, the speed limit signs, the flashing signs out around different locations in town, and some of the places that people have been complaining, the monitor will go up there, and every time somebody goes through and the light goes off, you'll probably get in a blink in your house because it's gonna blink whenever time that light goes off. So some of the people that are complaining, you're gonna have a light outside your house, and a vehicle goes through there, you're gonna have a light flash in your house. You might have to close your curtains so you don't see it, but we're gonna move out around town a little bit more. People say they don't see it. We had a setting down on Main Street, down on the other side of railroad track one day, and we watched it. The average truck came through town anywhere from twenty-eight to thirty-two mile an hour, which is the thirty mile an hour speed limit in town. The average car came through town at thirty-five to forty-two. So the cars are driving faster, it just looks like the trucks, because the trucks are bigger. So, and we had complaints about them out on Middleburg Road, Union Bridge Road, which is not ours, that's a county road, down on Route thirty, on Route seventy-five, that's a state highway. So everybody's aware of it, so we'll just have to see if, get some traffic enforcement from the Sheriff's Department, and they do have a regular truck enforcement that takes care of those problems rather than our regular deputies, because truck enforcement comes in and they inspect the trucks, and that's, it's probably better than just getting a traffic ticket, because when they inspect the trucks, they get them for a whole lot of other things that DO2 usually gets their trucks for. So we had a complaint of traffic packed, all the way backed out on Main Street up at Elmer Wolf School two weeks ago. They were backed up, cleared down past your house, almost to the doctor's office.
Almost to the doctor's office.
And out the other way to Union Bridge Road. People going in and out of the school, picking up their kids. I think it's ridiculous that the buses have to, buses can't even get in. They're setting out on seventy-five, out on Main Street, because they can't even get in to load the kids, because they have those many parents coming in and picking up their kids. So that's a problem that school's gonna have to take care of, and how they're gonna address that problem, but that is a problem with Carroll County Board of Education. It is a hazard when they're setting on Main Street, because you actually have a lane of traffic tied up both ways when they're setting out there like that. And it was addressed, it was, they know, it brought to their attention last year, it's brought to their attention again this year. I don't know how we're gonna solve the problem, you know, to try to reroute them through the parking lot. It's just that there's so many parents that pick up their kids and take them to school now. I don't know why we pay for buses. We all just keep the buses off the road, that would save the taxpayers a couple hundred thousand dollars a year for keep the buses from going. But we pay for the buses, and the kids are going by their parents, so that's their choice. So when we get complaints up there about the traffic, it's not a lot that we can do about it, because they are going into school picking up their kids. And I understand it's not just this school, it's almost every school system in the county, so I don't know how you're gonna solve that problem. That's a problem that we can talk to the Board of Education about.
Change the pickup time for parents.
Yeah.
After the buses leave.
I mean, you go out to Francis Scott Key High School, they actually have teachers out there directing traffic, because the kids are supposed to wait until the buses leave, and they're directing traffic there, so they can get the buses in and out with, with the cars. The students don't pay attention. It's, it's terrible. We had a complaint about the mowing down at the park, about too much mowing and the, uh, the caterpillars and things like that. They mow when Bonnie Keys, that lives out here on seventy-five, we call her the Butterfly Lady, she tells them when, uh, we can mow and when we can't mow, because they, she's been collecting butterflies and doing all this stuff for the butterflies for years down there, and she teaches that to schools. So they usually mow when they tell them it's, it's ready to mow. Other than, the other week, we had a tree fall down. They moved the tree and ran over probably a little patch like that of milkweed, but other than that, they don't mow the milkweed until Mrs. Keys tells them, and there's a certain time that you mow and you don't mow. So the butterflies are soon be going back to Mexico or somewhere pretty soon, so it's pretty neat how they report that. Tom Long is a chairman of Planning and Zoning Commission, and his term is up, and I would like to reappoint Tom to Planning and Zoning Commission with the council's approval, so I need a motion for that, if that's okay with everybody.
I make a motion that we reappoint Tom Long to the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Noes, motion's carried. All right, and now we come to Mandy Porter, our attorney for update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At mayor and town council meeting back in August, on August twenty-sixth, resolution number zero-two twenty twenty-four, zero-three twenty twenty-four, and zero-four twenty twenty-four was introduced to town council. It was advertised in the Carroll County Times twice prior to tonight's meeting on September tenth and September seventeenth, stating that there is going to be a public hearing for any questions or concerns relating to these resolutions. Resolution number zero-two twenty twenty-four changes the occupancy for qualifications of councilmen, stating that they have to maintain their primary residence in the town of Union Bridge for at least two years immediately preceding their election. And resolution zero-three twenty twenty-four is for the mayor, and that again is to maintain occupancy in the town of Union Bridge for at least two years immediately preceding the election. And for uncontested elections for zero-four twenty twenty-four, this is for cases in which there, the number of duly qualified candidates for the office is equal to or less than the number of vacancies for such an office, then no election shall be held for such office. This is to avoid unnecessary costs when there are not multiple nominations for candidates for the office. If this is approved tonight, which that would be the next step going forward, is that this would be approved, that there would be forty days from tonight's meeting that the public would have the opportunity to file a referendum and state that this should not go forward and why. These resolutions will be maintained here, and they will be posted at the town office during those period of forty days, and they will also be running in the Carroll County Times once a week for four weeks during that time. If we do not receive anything from the public, then on the fiftieth day, then that will be adopted, and then we will go forward with the charter amendment through the state of Maryland. So we would need for a motion to approve the resolutions zero-two, zero-three, and zero-four twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance zero-two dash twenty twenty-four to amend the town charter concerning residency to run for council, ordinance zero-three dash twenty twenty-four to amend the town charter concerning residency to run for mayor, and ordinance zero-four dash twenty twenty-four to amend the town charter concerning uncontested elections.
I'll second it.
Want to change that to say resolution rather than charter, right? It says resolution on a resolution number.
Resolution number, yes.
Resolution number instead of charter number.
Okay, so changed.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Noes, okay, so we'll, for forty days.
And just a quick update on the PFAS multi-state litigation. Tyco and BASF are additional defendants, because they keep adding defendants in these cases. There is an opt-in and opt-out that's going on right now, and I believe we went through this previously with a couple other defendants. If you opt out, which our litigation team is stating that they do not believe that would be good for the town to opt out, because that would mean that essentially the town would have to file as an individual going forward instead of with a multi-state. So their recommendation is that the town of Union Bridge opt in instead of opting out and move forward with all the settlement negotiations with Tyco and BASF, which I believe we've discussed this multiple times with other defendants throughout the PFAS, but they keep bringing up new defendants, and it's always a time crunch in order to figure out if we want to opt in or opt out. So I would need the town to, um, make a motion as whether they want to opt in or opt out of the Tyco and BASF settlements for the PFAS litigation.
It's under where you think, right, or benefit?
Absolutely. I so move.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Noes, okay, thank you.
Thank you, nothing further.
Okay. Uh, next is Deputy Clusey. Like I said, he, uh, he's on maternity leave. He and his wife had a little baby boy on September the second, so he's off on maternity leave. He, uh, there's a, several deputies that have been coming around town. We've had a couple of deputies have been riding around in plane cars, riding around town at nighttime and during the day. We always have those little things that goes on around town, and I'm sure we'll have, when he gets back, we'll have a report of five hundred calls in town, and only about three of them needed a police report. But they have been in town, and there has been some reports taken. The other evening, there was no report taken, but I almost saw two kids on bicycles almost get run over by the car wash, because they were on, they were coming in town on the right-hand side of the road, and they cut right in front of a lady that was coming into town, and she slammed on her brakes, and she stopped and hollered at them, and of course, she got cursed at. But, and these kids would have been definitely wrong, because they were on the right side of the street and went straight across in front of her, and she did all the best she could to stop, and she all but hit them. But there's been some stuff about, one lady wants them to get helmets again. The VFW bought like five hundred dollars worth of helmets a couple years ago, and they gave them to the kids. There's not one kid in this town that wears a helmet that got those helmets before. I don't know where they are. The one lady up on Benham, she wants to, she wants to go through another process in getting helmets for kids again. I personally think it's a waste of money for an organization to put that kind of money out for helmets, because the kids don't wear them. The kids that I see that wear them down on the trail on a regular basis, because they're with their parents, and the parents wear their helmets, and the kids wear their helmets. These other kids out here on the street could care less, because their parents could care less. You give them to them, and the parents don't make them wear them. So why go through the expense of buying helmets, giving them to them, so they can take them home and put them in the closet, or lay them out in the yard and throw rocks at them and break them up. So it's only so much you can do for them. It's unfortunate that, like we've said for years and years and years, people have kids, and they want the towns to raise them for them, and that's not what we're here for. We're try here, try to take care of them, give them activities, but the parents have to take a little responsibility also, and, and we're not seeing that happen. So I don't know what the solution is there with buying helmets. But Kevin will be back. I think he's got another week and a half, two weeks, he'll be back on duty. All right, we'll get into committee reports, or public comments and concerns, we'll get there, and I won't miss that. Public comments and concerns. Come up and state your name and the microphone, please, and your address.
I'm with the Carroll County Times.
Oh, well, good. We're glad to have you here.
I'm Sherri Greenfield with the Carroll County Times. I just wanted to find out, we wanted to know what, um, how'd you all make changes to the election? Was there something that happened, or as far as residency is concerned?
No, we just, we're just trying to catch up with where everybody else is doing it these days, because we feel that you get people that move into town, they're here for one year, they really don't know what's going on in the town, and we feel that it's better for us if we go through the process and have them be residents of the town for at least two years before they try to run for office. Maybe they'll come to council meetings and get involved, so they have a general idea of what's going on. And then also for not having a uncontested election saves us a lot of money, because we don't have to do, we don't have to have our election people sitting down here for, you know, twelve, thirteen hours a day, and no one shows up, because it's uncontested election.
Because it's an incumbent that's running.
Right, yes.
Okay, okay, so it would have to be an incumbent, and that nobody else is challenging it.
Right, yes.
Okay. Um, how long were the current, well, the previous or current, um...
Can we go, excuse me, can we go back to that? Is that how it's written?
It's not how it is written.
No.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter how many people, whether it's an incumbent or not, it's just that there's only one person per position running.
If it's only one person running, right.
One person, whether they're incumbent or not, like if somebody knew.
Right.
It wouldn't matter, because...
It would just automatically...
Yes.
Get elected anyways.
Right, yes.
Okay, okay, so this was just, you just...
Tidying things up, cleaning up.
Cleaning up, nothing, okay. That's answered our question. Thank you.
We're glad to see you. We haven't had a newspaper reporter since a couple of years ago, and we had an election, we had a reporter here, so hopefully we'll see more of you.
Yeah, I come to the county commissioners, but, uh, thank you.
Okay, public comments and concerns. Okay, we'll go into committee reports then. We'll start with Sherri.
Okay. On August twenty-ninth, I reported a laid out for the second time at one oh-nine North Main Street. September eleventh, I attended the MML quarterly dinner meeting, and I responded to councilperson Laura Conway in reference to trash piled up at the corner of Benidam and Lightner Streets. It appears that the tenants moved out. I did go by there this morning, and it's, there's no trash on the sidewalk, but it's definitely junky.
Yes.
So I don't, I don't know if you, how we want to handle that moving forward as far as...
We'll contact the owner of the property.
Okay, so that would be, Dawn, will you do that, or do I do that?
He's, he's well aware of the situation.
The Elgar, um...
Mr. Bulker.
Benidam Corner House.
Oh, two?
Next to the log mat.
Yes, 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 yes. I thought you said two, like T-W-O.
Is it in there a period of time that it has to sit out there?
It's not on the street anymore. I mean, they finally cleaned it up off the street, but the porch and the underneath the porch is...
Junk.
Yeah, they finally, I think it's only, it was only one bag left on the corner, I believe.
Right, and they found, that's all gone, so made sure that, of that.
I'll contact Nathan.
All right, Dawn, thank you. And then on September sixteenth, I reported the dim light at the corner of West Broadway and White. So other than that, that's all I have to report.
Okay, Ellen?
Um, September eleventh, I attended the Carroll County chapter of the MML meeting down in Hampstead, right, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Very good, which I'll get the notes to Laura later. On the eighteenth, we had our first United Way and Rescue Mission food truck pantry at the community center. It worked very well. Don't think we had quite as many people as we had up at Elmer Wolf, but I think that's because there was a little lag time in getting it out to the public. So it'll be up there from now until they decide to change it again. And just an item of interest for anybody who's interested, on September thirtieth, St. James Lutheran Church will be having a meeting at six o'clock. For anybody who wants to come and discuss or hear what's gonna happen with the church, whether they're gonna stay open, whether they're gonna close, whether they're gonna sell it, what they're gonna do. So thought that might be something...
And also what they're gonna do with the food pantry. There's different, a couple different things that they're talking about doing with that, so. I don't know if you have to let them wait, no or not, because I know when I got the invitation, it asked that we RSVP, so I don't, I don't know.
No, you don't have, you just have to show up. It's at six o'clock at the church.
So they have no preacher anymore?
No, she left a while back.
Right, and it is staying open until at least December thirtieth. The bishop will come out and do a Christmas service, which makes our second service for the year, which is how we're staying open. What's gonna happen after that is what's gonna be discussed here, on the thirtieth.
What was the date?
September thirtieth.
September thirtieth, a week from today, on Monday, at six o'clock, immediately right after the food pantry.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, Brett?
Okay, we have bids back for the RFP for the Quaker Hill Road new water line, new cir, service lines, water service lines. An RFP was issued for the Quaker Hill Road new water service lines project with a sealed bid opening held on Friday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-four at ten a.m. The town received two bids. The first bid from Stanballs Incorporated was for twenty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Second bid was Mid-Atlantic Utilities for sixty-one thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. Stanballs was the lowest responsible bidder. The town is familiar with Stanballs Incorporated located in the town and has been very satisfied with their previous work for the town. Stanballs proposed to use Shield Water Plumbing to complete the plumbing installation from the meter vault to connections inside the houses. I have contacted three references provided and was able to reach two of the references, with both interviews being very favorable. Also verified work form for each reference was for plumbing work and in line with the scope of work for this project. Bids received and all documentation related to this project can be found in the project file located at the town office. If you're not familiar with this at all, it's Roxanne McGuire's and Harold Selby's old house up there were connected to an old, I'm gonna call it a supply line, that, that ran up there. So it's leaking underneath Roxanne's driveway. So this is to clean that mess up. That was a mess. Years ago, we cleaned some of it up when we did the, the new line for the, uh, the homes out there.
Shriner Court.
Shriner Court, excuse my brain. So this is an effort to further clean up what is just an old mess up there. So that's why we're doing it. Just, I, I move that we approve contract for Stanballs Incorporated to do this project for twenty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
I have a question. The, the plumbing, this Shield Water plumbing price is included in the twenty-four three thirty-nine?
Yes.
Okay, wow. That was it?
Who's second?
Ellen.
All right, further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Noes? Motion's approved.
All right, it's, it's all I have.
Okay, all right, thank you, Brett. Laura?
On August twenty-ninth, I met with Joy Bowman of Shriner Court and Dawn to review and revise the Shriner Court Residence Handbook. On August thirtieth, we had the final snow cone at the square event, and I'd like to thank the Union Bridge Fire Company for donating ice for all of our snow cone events all summer, and also my volunteers, Judy Jones, Ellen Cutzale, and our friend Monty, who was the Boy Scout that was always here. He came to every single snow cone event and had a smile on his face and served many snow cones. On September third, I started working on the Union Bridge Drug Awareness Expo with Master Deputy McGinnis designed the flyer, and I created a registration form for vendors, drafted invitation, and emailed up to fifty-plus organizations. On September fourth, I request the PIA for August twenty twenty-four. On September thirteenth, I notified Sherri about a streetlight issue on White Street. On September nineteenth, I had a drug awareness meeting with Perry. So the drug, the Union Bridge Drug Awareness Expo will be on Wednesday, October second, twenty twenty-four, from four p.m. to eight p.m. at the Union Bridge Fire Company in the social hall. This is a free community event for youth and adults. We will have a guest speaker, Vaughn Ripley, who runs the nonprofit Trinity's Children, and someone from the Carroll County Emergency Communications to give a presentation on Narcan administration. And we're working with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office about getting impairment goggles. So pretty much every day since our last meeting, I have been working on this drug awareness expo by making invitations, sending invitations, answering emails, contacting organizations, and so forth. And throughout the month, I spoke to Lita regarding several parking enforcement matters, because Master Deputy McGinnis is on maternity leave. And we also received a complaint about someone who received two parking tickets on a Saturday. They didn't realize they had to pay a meter on a Saturday, but they think that the meter reader watched them getting out of the cars and then ticketed them, and Lita does not do that. She's honest, she's trustworthy, she does not wait in the trees or anything, waiting for people to get out of their cars to ticket people. She just tickets people when she sees it flashing red, and it's very obvious that it's flashing red to her. So just wanted to make sure. She's honest, she's not, you know, gonna do that kind of stuff, so that's all that I have.
It says on the meter, meters be paid on Saturday.
Yes, it does.
It's amazing how many people pay on Sunday. I watch them.
I see people come up there at seven o'clock in the morning and pay, and the guys say, well, we'll just go ahead and pay, so they don't have to worry about it. Gives them two hours, so. It's a quarter.
I have attended all meetings, work session, planning...
I have attended all meetings, work session, planning and zoning, and council meeting with the exception of the August work session because I was on vacation.
Good for you.
Yep.
And the young lady from Carroll County Times, if we can give you one of these, maybe you can put this in the paper for us that, uh, hopefully, uh, I had a phone call and I, I was telling Laura, we have a, a, a gentleman, I think he's going to come because he is a, um, I guess he has, has been involved in drugs and stuff and he wants to come and speak about his experience. So I'm hoping he shows up. There's a couple, uh, people within our area in New Windsor that have had that problem and they seem like they want to come. And I think that's a good idea for them to come. I think it's a good idea for parents. And I was talking to one of the teachers at Elmer Wolf School. Um, and she thinks it's a great idea. They, they're putting notices at Elmer Wolf School because it's never too early to start. Bobby, you worked out there for years and I'm sure you've got some horror stories from out there. Uh, the other couple of weeks ago, I, uh, Francis Scott Keys, supposedly a young lady had, um, lipstick laced with cocaine or fentanyl in, in the school. So, uh, I think it's a good thing for just not the kids to be there, but the parents, the grandparents, anybody that's got a couple hours to show up, you know, next week to come in and see what's going on. Because, I mean, it affects not just us, it affects every household somehow or another. Somewhere in your lifetime, somebody in your household or family is going to have this problem. So I just think it's a very good thing. We'll probably have another one in the spring because, uh, they say that Carroll County has a really big one at the Ag Center every April. Uh, that's their big event down there. But they, um, they really think it's a good idea for each community to try to have an event going on, just to bring people aware of what's going on. Uh, it's, it's sad. I mean, unfortunately, you can be standing at the square and you can smell different cars when they go by. You can smell it coming out of the cars when they goodbye. We just had this summer doing snow cones up there and cars stopped at the traffic light and you sat there and you say, my goodness, what's that smell? And you smell it coming out of the vehicles while you're sitting there. But, uh, but then again, if part of us legal anymore, so, uh, what can you say? We just hope that our, you know, we can keep our community as safe as possible and get the word out there and, you know, if we only save one life, it's well worth saving. We just never know nowadays. Anybody else have anything else? Our next work session will be October the 7th because the 14th is a holiday. And then our next meeting will be October the 28th at 7 p.m. Unless there's anything elsewhere in line for adjournment.
I will make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Noes? Thank you very much. We'll see you next month.